Said you were stalking me.
I never felt bad, except when I couldn't stand up and well, and when I fell down and hit my face. But that hurt, once on this side, then once on this side, because this one wasn't enough. I had to do it again.
That's the line item right here.
Mm-hmm. Yes, alright. That's it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did you say? No, I felt fine and.
That's so he doesn't wander off mentally. But you could like see it snowing or raining or. But no, this is for those people who have attention issues.
They have no windows.
You'll put them in a closet.
Okay. Okay, being six o'clock this evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you all make sure your phones are shut off and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mr. Clemish.
Thank you all for coming this evening. First item on the agenda, would you take roll call, Cassie?
I've heard the last meeting, I just want to let you guys know in the present.
Thank you for that.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
John.
Here. Next item for, and Don is here by phone, so. Any, any of the commission members have any financial conflict of interest on any items that are going to be brought up this evening?
I do not.
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 I would like a motion then to approve our gen- uh, the chairman. Agenda.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to, item number seven is actually the ra- a raise grant and not a flat grant.
Is a what?
Raise grant. And just, it's, it's still a grant, but we'll just correct that. And then I'd move approval with the correction.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve with the adjustment by Dan and second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address the body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an ag- on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of your remaining speaking time. Are there anyone here for public comment? We're good? Public comment is closed. Item number five, I guess, um, members are here, are we going to need any comments on that other than just approval?
Yeah, Rob, do we need, is that a hearing or anything? We can do that ahead of time.
Okay, and, uh, people are here, auditor Cassie, would you, uh, read that resolution?
Sundance Road.
Sundance Resolution.
We, yeah, we usually don't read them.
Don't have to read them?
Yeah, no. I, I.
I have it here if you.
Can I have a motion on approval of the res- resolution for the Sundance Road District?
I'd move approval of the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Sundance, South Sundance Road District pursuant to.
Go ahead.
SDCL thirty-one twelve. So I have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion?
So just to be clear on it, you know, because the last one we did look at the canvas of the voting for it and do we have that record here with the outcome of the vote for this road district was?
Um, it was unanimous.
Anonymous, okay, just.
And it's a ministerial task, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have to prove it if it meets it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I have a motion and a second and no further discussion, can I, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, sorry, I have a habit of moving papers around. Uh, approve the January sixteen twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the, strike that, are we skipping the contact center?
I am so sorry. No, we're not skipping the contact center. We have, uh, Rebecca.
Although it, we are ahead of time, so we could.
No, this is.
Rebecca is here. Rebecca is here for a report, so.
Welcome. You don't need to hand those out for you. Like we got these in our packet.
I think it's the second button over, there you go.
There, the, the red, little red light comes on, you're good.
Because you're tall if you make it. Our at-home viewers can hear.
Oh, okay. So I am the director at the Yankton Contact Center and for those of you that might not know, we are the local food pantry and Salvation Army Extension Unit. So we obviously provide food to Yankton, or the greater Yankton area, but we also provide rental assistance, utility assistance, medication, gas, diapers and formula. We also do a holiday meal basket program and we do backpacks for back to school. So on the sheet that I provided, you are the stats for our twenty twenty-three in review and I thought that those would be important for you guys to see since you guys do support our mission. In total last year, through our food pantry and our emergency assistance programs, we provided three thousand and eighteen assistances to people. Seven, or twenty-five hundred of those were through our food pantry and then the rest were through our assistance programs.
Rachel, how, how does that compare to last year? As the, I'm sure it's gone up, right?
It's gone up pretty significantly, like in a monthly, like last year, our average visits to like the food pantry and things like that was a hundred and sixty-five. And this year, our average was like a hundred and eighty-five. But even in the last six months, we didn't have numbers under two hundred. So we had over, in like January, we had two hundred and twenty-one visits to the contact center, so. You know, like our food pantry, we spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just on food last year and then twenty-five thousand on, uh, like our rental and utilities. So that's all money that's coming into us on donation, but then it's going back out into the community, so. I think our program is really needed and it's really growing, so I wanted you guys to see those numbers so that you can see that the money that the county is giving to us is benefiting the people of Yankton County as long, and also going back into the revenue stream in Yankton. Another pretty substantial thing that came in was our in-kind food donations, so this was like people bringing in donations. This was the first year that we actually tracked that and we had over fourteen thousand pounds of food donated. So that was pretty awesome. So on the review that I gave to you guys, it kind of highlighted, this was my first year as the director at the contact center, so we made a lot of changes. The biggest one being the operating model of our food pantry, we went from like just handing people food through a window to a client choice model where they actually come in and shop and pick the items based on the size of their family. So it's not like willy-nilly, they're just taking whatever they want. We still limit like based on their family sizes. And we also started utilizing volunteers to help with stress on staff because our staff also are payees for social security. Each one of them, not myself, but the other three staff, each have about thirty payees through social security on top of that. And then the other thing that we are doing to try to help with our budget cost is we became partners of feeding South Dakota and TFAF. And so just in, we just started that in, from September to December and we saved about six thousand dollars just in that timeframe on food, so.
What is TFAF?
TFAF is food through the Department of Education and it's free. We only have like about five or six items that we get to choose from, but we, it's still food that's coming into the pantry that we're not paying for, so. I think that's a nutshell and I might have gone over my five minutes. Does anyone have any questions?
Are you seeing any, how do I say, have you seen an increase of, of individuals who were English isn't their primary language?
Absolutely, forty percent of our clientele right now through our food pantry is Spanish-speaking as their primary language. Today actually was the first day that we had a translating device in works, so we, we've been working with like connecting cultures and cornerstone learning, I lost that for a second, but we, it's, it's a really big issue for us, the language barrier, so. But we're working on getting a translating device, hopefully we'll be able to get a grant approved and get that purchased, so.
And has, have you seen that increase from last year to this year, most of that forty percent, or is that over time, or what would you say?
So I can't, I don't know. So twenty twenty-three was the first year that I, we had a tracking software in place. Before they were just tracking it on paper and like it was fuzzy, at least in my opinion. And so now we have an actual software that tracks each individual family, every member of their family and everything, so we have a much clearer picture of the clientele we're serving, the demographic of the people we're serving, so.
Forty percent, that's a significant increase in your.
Yeah.
Thank you for everything you do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Rebecca.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the commission?
I'd move approval of the report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the contact center report. Any other further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Don, go ahead.
I'd just like, I'd just like to add that this is probably the best report that I've read from the contact center in my ten years. She's obviously doing a number of great things to enhance the operation and I think her.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good, thanks Don. Thanks for those comments. I have a motion and a second to approve the contact center's report. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now we will go to the raise grant. Dan, you want to collaborate on that a little bit, or you want Don to do it?
Well, yeah, Don actually started this, I believe it was last year when he was a chairman. We applied for it, the grant, and we're close to getting it and we're just basically reapplying. That right, Don, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I read through the entire thing and they, they put a lot of effort into, uh, organizing their presentation and, and answering questions that I'm sure will arise as the process moves forward.
Sounds good, and, and my understanding is this, this is a grant to do a feasibility study to connect some access areas between Vermilion and Yankton to the Missouri River and, um, other sites that, that are available through the forestry division or the state recreational areas.
Just for clarification, is this the one where they want to build a bike trail along the river?
That's a little bit of a misconception.
Yeah.
But yes, they want to make sure that there's bicycle access along the river to a certain degree, but there's, there's other access points that they, they're not talking about taking and building a bike trail along the river.
And I, and I want to be clear, my position on this is that if we do get this grant, we work with willing landowners to work together and just so there's no, no misconception, we want to, we want to work with people who want to work with us and, and I think that's probably true about all you guys.
Well, and the reason I ask that is because it's my understanding from talking with some of the landowners along the Missouri River that they're not enthralled with this idea. They don't want people on their land, they don't want people accessing the river. They're not in favor.
Well, I, I think that was, the bike path was one idea that's maybe people have jumped on and, like I said, this is something I would support if we work with willing landowners.
Even in this, even in this report here that we have up in here, have in our packet here, you know, it shows out maps of single track and stuff and and I, and I've heard from some landowners, one actually in Clay County that is very deeply opposed to this. So I, I think this is an uphill battle, definitely. But this is really a feasibility-only study.
Exactly.
Not actually going to implement any part of this.
Exactly.
So.
And, and District Three is great, is, is the one that's involved in the designing or, or the feasibility of this, this plan, so. I, I just, I think it's a collaboration between Yankton County and Clay County that, that may be something that, that we should take a look at. And I agree that, that personal landowners are not going to be infringed upon for if, if they don't want us there or want the, the path there, there's plenty of other avenues for, for the, for this study to, to look at.
I think, I think one of my big concerns about just in this presentation, and I have probably far more cycling experience than anyone on, in this room having raced for fifteen years. But that there's, there isn't, as far as we can see, there's no private group, no, no nonprofit private group that's in the area that's really going to be helping maintain these trails. Just in my experience in Missouri, that those groups are essential to make sure that a trail this size is feasible that's not on public lands. Even, even trails that are on public lands rely heavily on volunteers to maintain trails like these. And it seems to gloss over that a little bit, I think that's one of the concerns of feasibility, I think, that rather raises the flag on, on this one, but like I said.
Maybe you could mute, Don.
Maybe ask him, hey, Don, could you mute your phone?
Hey, Don, can you, can you mute your phone, there's, there's a bunch of background noise coming on through, until you want to speak.
Thank you.
I think the bicycle trail was one, just one small part that maybe has got overshadowed others, but it was also access for kayaks and things like that. One thing that we saw is if, if you wanted to take a kayak trip, you can go out by Yankton by the, the dog park and you're going to do a fifteen-mile kayak trip or you're not going to do a other one, because there's no access point to get off on that and it was kind of a safety issue. What the presentation we were at where we have people out boating and fishing and a storm comes up and it's, it's a long way to get out of the river. So biking is a part of it, but it's also access to this national park. And so that's, that's another thing to consider too, so, but I get your concerns and, and they're valid.
I go, I go back to though, that this is a feasibility study, so we, I hope that those, that the feasibility studies sees that and maybe something comes up with some way of addressing that, so.
Good idea.
Yep.
Now do we vote?
They were, they were suggesting that there be, be at least two major presentations to the, to the counties on what, what has been studied and, and, and so I think there'll be plenty of discussion.
So at this time, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the Yankton County addressing or signing the, the raise grant resolution.
I guess I would move to approve the resolution to apply for a grant.
Okay, I have a motion, can I ask for a second?
I'll second it.
Kettering, second. So I have a motion to approve the, the resolution for Yankton County to sign this evening for the raise grant in, um, motion by Wanda and seconded by Don Kettering, that we approve that. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we will approve the January sixteen minutes.
I would move to approve the January sixteen twenty twenty-four minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the January sixteen minutes. Further discussion? Hearing or seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have the commission to discuss a five-star streaming proposal. Ryan, you want to handle this for just?
Sure, so we were approached from Five Star Streaming. As you know, we've, I've, I've often said is that we need to improve this meeting experience, this is a, it's a long-term project to provide a better video feed of this meeting and try to increase the transparency of this meeting. So they have heard me and they reached out to me and, and they've brought to me this proposal I wanted to bring to you guys. They want to essentially take over the work of streaming this online, still on YouTube as it is today. They would stream it on their five-star streaming channel as well as the Yankton County channel on YouTube. Make it available so that we can also possibly stream it on other social medias as we can make avail- Make it available so that we can also possibly stream it on other social medias as we can make available. This, but more importantly, that they would work with John and with the equipment we have here in the room and bring in audio feed, video feed from our laptop that presents on the screen here so that that can be split screens presented on the video as well as instead of having a phone with a microphone close to it, setting up Skype feeds that we could have numerous people call in Skype feeding directly into the system so that that is then no longer an issue of trying to feed it through a microphone. It'd be directly into the stream and much better audio quality. So in that, they are proposing that they would do this, no cost to the county. As the agreement says, they would actually be paying fifty dollars per meeting for someone to actually administrate it. Pretty much where Gary's sitting right now from that point. And make sure everything runs smoothly. Their only thing is that they're going to put their little Five Star Streaming logo on the bottom. I think, Wanda, you were talking a bit, having the date.
Yeah, my only request to whoever does this is that they put the date of the meeting on there so that if somebody wants to figure out what we talked about on December fifth, twenty twenty-three, for example, they could go back and find it without looking through all of the.
And I would go even farther saying a full date timestamp.
Yes.
And, yeah, and they would have their little watermark logo on the bottom, possibly even having advertisers, appropriate advertisers also to help pay for this service and software to develop this.
Who determines the appropriateness of the advertisers, though, I guess is? You know, because I get what you're saying, there's a watermark to put advertisers on. It's not necessarily five-star, maybe they're on there too, but.
It'd be five-star and it would be advertisers through a five-star, so of their channel, that sponsored their channel.
And a concern maybe that I would have is there may be an appearance that Yankton County, by having advertisers on their endorses, that, you know, maybe we have a disclaimer or something that.
It would be.
I think a disclaimer would take care of that issue.
Disclaimer on the bottom of the video would be good.
Or at the beginning and the end, I think that'd be reasonable.
Or, yeah, we could do it as an intro beginning.
Sure.
Advertising is, note that this is in no way Yankton County sponsorship of any of these. Those sponsors are helping pay for this service.
We, you know, don't necessarily support the advertiser or whatever. And then, who would own the video? Because I know prior to, I guess Don would remember this, a while back we had a contractor do it and then they owned the video. So we would make sure that, I'd like, the county owns it because it's a public record, really. And so we just need to get that figured out that.
Or the county gets a copy, owns a copy.
Well, we would have, we would have a copy on our channel, so it would be part of our YouTube buyer archive as well.
YouTube channel would have that.
And I believe in the past, Patty kept like a CD copy.
And we would be able to.
For like a hard copy of.
And we'd be able to keep a hard copy and then, yes, that would be a good thing to definitely put in there. Actually, it's saying that we retain the digital rights to the video, to the content.
Okay, yeah.
Should maybe add that to this.
Yes, I think we should add that to this.
And then will it be broadcast anywhere else? I know there's quite a few people that watch it on the public access channel. Would it be made, because I believe currently it's made available to the public access channel. I don't get cable, so I don't know that, but I've been told that people enjoy watching it on that, so.
We would, we would have access, we would be able to put it onto the public access channel as well. It would be going everywhere it still goes today, they would be adding it to their channel. And they'd be providing these services.
We maybe should have something as a backup too, if that individual can't make it. There's a plan in place, somebody's sick, we have a meeting. And then on occasion, we do have special meetings too. Which we'd wanna record, you know, just for full disclosure, because we'd wanna record those too. Budget meetings, sometimes last longer.
Budget meetings, yeah, special meetings and budget meetings.
What about the tax appeal meetings?
Yeah, or Planning Commission, I mean, so it's a lot of meetings.
And, you know, ideally, once we have this set up too, this, you know, we should be able to have multiple people who'd be able to run this, so.
And my understanding is that we have to provide the person to actually run it. Is that, am I reading that correct?
They would be able to provide people too as well, so it'd be a cooperative effort, yeah.
For helping put this together and facilitating the meetings, we ask that these streams are, we also provide backend troubleshooting.
Rob, do you see any issue with that? Okay. And then as far as advertising it, if we have a disclaimer on that, is that something you'd recommend at the beginning and then? Okay. And then, Ryan, if you'd maybe work with Rob on the disclaimer and make sure it passes all that.
And we will train the person who runs the stream.
Do we have all necessary hardware, or are we gonna need to get more?
We've already, we've already kinda gone through that equipment and they know John too as well, so they'd be working with John to make sure that hardware wise. You know, obviously, we already know we would just run another HDMI output from that computer and get them over onto the, to the other computer and, you know. All the technology is here, it's just a matter of someone having the time to put it all together.
I think it's a good idea, where there's, you know, a few tweaks that we mentioned. And then, John, did you mention, maybe give another place an opportunity to?
I think that it would only be right, I appreciate Five Star stepping up and coming to us and making the offer to do this for us, but I think we should possibly give other broadcasting, you know, W N X Riverside Broadcasting is here this evening, an opportunity to look at this and, you know, how do we, how do we say which one of these people are gonna?
Well, and that is the thing, it's like, we didn't put out a request. We did not put out any official.
I think we should put out a request or something to say, okay, because everybody's got the right to advertise in Yankton County. And who's gonna do the better deal? I don't have a clue.
At the end of the day, we'll have to choose one anyway.
And I understand that, and there's gonna be hard feelings, I'm sure, so.
I think it's a good plan. May put it on the agenda for, you okay with that? And if somebody else wants to get in there and?
So it's kinda the idea, it's like, let's revisit back with possible changes here with Five Star. Maybe give the opportunity to W N X and K Y N D or Riverside.
See who wants to pay a hundred dollars.
Maybe we could put it up for auction.
Give them a chance.
Just like the city does with their.
To consider if they want to give an alternate proposal, you know, and that would be just two weeks, you know? And then we'd come back next meeting, possibly to approve a, to approve a final.
Yeah, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea to move towards something like this.
Would they, would we transfer like the YouTube channel to them? Or would it be a new channel?
We would maintain our own channel and they would have their channel. The meeting would be available on both channels.
Okay, okay, good.
I drafted up a quick disclaimer, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that could be good, good job, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan, for going and looking into that and bringing that proposal to us. So we will not make any action on this tonight. For discussion?
We'll get, we'll get these things ironed out here with Five Star and then also give the chance to other stations to possibly give another, give their counter proposal or a competing proposal.
Okay. Sounds good. And you also wanna speak on the Microsoft Office Enterprise discussion?
Yes, so I've been trying to get us to switch over to a Microsoft Enterprise. This is, it's a little scary to think that we have a hundred and sixteen licenses individually managed out there. The advantage here is that with Enterprise, it's gonna be a lot easier to maintain. Everything's the same, everything's across. Also, with this Enterprise, we are gonna get the full suite of Microsoft's defenders, extra phishing protection, we also have Microsoft Teams then. And some of these things are actually going to, they're almost essential for us to really work in improvements such as the ArcGIS panel, and some of the ArcGIS stuff for planning and zoning really could benefit from having this already deployed through our county. So the idea here is this is kind of a step towards moving our IT from something that has been just kind of spot managed inconsistently to something that's put together a little bit more fully completely as a countywide operation, so. Which is something that probably is long overdue as well, because we're, as I've learned in a year, we have a lot of hotspots in our IT strategy across the county, so.
Pricewise, is this comparable, good?
So a business for this package would be paying about two thousand dollars more than this quote. And this quote is the, this is a quote that is a competitively bid government quote.
Like through Bid Pro or something similar?
Yeah.
And that should be fine, Rob, for the, okay, great.
And so the, we've been trying to get this approved, so I'm hoping that we can just approve to make this switch countywide to go to an Enterprise office suite.
When will they switch it?
Immediately.
Oh, like, end of the week?
We're long overdue on some licenses to get them renewed already, so this can happen immediately.
So do we need a motion then?
And we're not at this point, we're not contractually connected with, through any other project of Microsoft or anything. So this would just be boom, and we're done.
Yeah, right, yeah, right now, everything's been done on individual accounts and individual transactions.
And I think this would need a motion.
Yeah, we discussed this with, I know the auditors on vacation and just where this is gonna come from, because this is pretty big, it's not that I don't agree with it, but it's a big chunk of change. Maybe we need to have her part of the conversation so she knows it's on.
I know, move closer to it.
Yeah, I have talked to Patty a little bit too about this, is that right now, the way we're structured, this bill actually has to sort of, to work with the budgets the way they are now, has to be divvied up across multiple departments. Ideally, I think we, going into budgeting this year, we wanna change that methodology and to start to create a real IT budget. And I've talked a little bit about, to Patty about it, is like, you know, I think, you know, we're getting to that stage where we may have an IT person on staff. Where does that person, I don't, I don't like the idea of actually creating another department. I think the most logical place is that the auditor's office housed the one, maybe one IT person that is kind of in charge of IT beyond, beyond me.
You know, a good point to bring up, as I did speak with one of the Bon Home Commissioners a few days ago, and they're in the process of looking for an IT person. And then Clay County, when John and I spoke with them, you know, maybe it's worth reaching out and seeing if they'd wanna collaborate on something like this. I know that's throwing a wrench into it, but it'd be worth a conversation because we're probably not big enough as Yankton County, but if we get a couple more counties in, we could.
I don't know that these people would agree to add in two more counties. Because that doesn't make logical sense.
Maybe it's a conversation to have over the next year or something.
Given the size of our employee base and everything and knowing what other companies do, most companies with the number of employees and endpoints that the Yankton County has and facilities that Yankton County has, would have multiple IT people. I mean, I think, I think we might be safe to actually have one person and plenty of work for them. And I don't think this is something that we have to fill immediately or make this change. I think this is something that we wanna be on the path towards. It's not something that we need to jump into this year, next year even, maybe. But I would like to see before I'm done with my term, that we have this into autopilot.
Isn't it somewhat of an issue that we don't have any licenses in place now?
A little bit.
You're the lawyer, you tell us.
I mean, it just seems to me that the county is kind of asking for trouble.
The state realizes this too, I actually testified for Senate Bill one eighty-seven that would, made it out of committee that would allocate up to seven million dollars for county and local governments to do IT and security. And, you know, we're hopeful that'll pass, but it might not either, but I think this is in the right direction.
So if that passes, do they just allocate each county based on population, or? Don't know?
It's gotta pass first, so it's an appropriation of seven million dollars, which there is, there is federal funds out there, but I believe South Dakota was the only state that chose not to do, take part in that.
I'm assuming they're gonna do it by population, size, maybe, maybe being Yankton County's number seven, we get seven percent.
Well, local government, municipalities and.
But I, but I mean, if we were to approve this, it would come in, we could use those monies to add to our budget to pay those, yes.
I guess I don't have a problem.
I guess at this time, I would, at this time, I would like to have a motion if one is available to approve the Microsoft Enterprise product.
Do you want this tonight, or can we talk to Patty first? I mean, if she's, you know, I'd like to.
I'm willing to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the Microsoft Manager Government Quote in the amount of eighty-five thousand, seven hundred, eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
Just to be clear, that's over three years.
Over a three-year period.
Oh, it's over, okay, well that.
Hurts a little less, does it, Dan?
Well, yeah, I was thinking where we're gonna find this.
I'm surprised the way Wanda likes to spend money that she would do this.
So it's over a three-year period?
It's a three-year quote, yes.
I feel a lot better about that then, okay.
I have a motion and a second, I need a second, I guess.
I'll second that motion, so, okay.
Motion by Wanda, second by?
Dan.
Dan.
Yeah.
Dan, okay.
Yeah, we'll give Dan this one.
You know, and I appreciate it's, yeah, over a three-year period, that hurts a lot for us.
Do we need, any other further commissions?
I think we do have, I think Paul wants to talk.
I have a question.
Yep, not a problem.
In our world, you know, we always worry about redundancy and backup and all this stuff and you're way more smarter about this than I. My concern is doing this, will this tie everybody together? So if one system has a problem, it takes everybody else down? Are we still separated? So like emergency management agent, the department over there, if the government center crashes, we stay up running?
This license is, this is just a licensing, licensing. And so all of your, all your local software is still completely separate. On top of that, though, you would have new software, like the Teams and all those things that are cloud-based.
Correct.
And those would be all kind of interconnected, but your local software that's locally on your machine is still there. And if everything else goes down, it's still there and active.
Because I know in one conversation we had with some of our people, is that they wanna all put it in one spot. And, you know, we fight with that because of all the training we've taken and education through Homeland Security and all this stuff, that's the worst thing to do, even though you like to see everything on one big server and everybody can see it. But when one reads the wrong email, everything goes poof. And we just wanna make sure we don't, I just, it was just a question and like, I don't know enough about it. Well, that's why I'm asking you.
So, yeah, this is all about making sure that all of our licenses are all on one.
Okay.
If we get Microsoft Teams, I'm sold on that, I've been on that for a long time.
Any further discussion by the commission? Hearing and seeing none? I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Next item, maybe rezone, Gary.
This is a first reading applicants requesting rezone of RT to moderate density R2 per Article eighteen, Section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, Section twenty oh three. and Article 20, Section 2003. Said property is legally described as a south 217 and 80 hundreds feet of the east 766 and 50 hundreds feet, excepting the east 50 feet thereof. Located in the south, 13.2 acres of the southeast quarter, Section 9, Township 93 North, range 56 west to the fifth principal meridian. This basically is getting rid of a, if this is a three and a half acre parcel that we're just trying to get more in compliance and versus having the RT, the 20 acre, so.
We've rezoned a number of properties, like, right next to this one over the years too, haven't we?
Yeah, and this is the property that's just basically on top of their current house also.
And, and this rezone would make that property available for more housing, is that?
It could possibly, um, it could, they could possibly add a house to that north, north three and a half acres, or tie them together and make it one big parcel.
Sure, okay. Need a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
No, gotta wait till second.
That's right.
Let's open it for public comment.
Public comment, yes, first reading? Hearing seeing none, public comment is closed. Approved claims, need a motion? Uh, there's, there's an item on page number four, for Fox Law Firm that we will not pay this evening. Other than that, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the claims with the item on page four.
With the exception of?
With the exception of the item on page four, or Fox Law Firm.
Okay.
Well.
Second.
And I have a second. Any, I have a motion by Ryan, second by Wanda, any further commission discussion?
Yeah, under Commissioner Fund, what was the Department of Transportation?
It's on page four?
Or, this one would be page three.
It says Department 130?
No, no, I'm talking under the, the Commissioner General Fund, the Department of Transportation for $29,000.
What's that for? Twenty-nine thousand?
What page are you on, Dan?
Study, got it, okay, that makes sense, all right, that was my, that was my question, yeah.
Yep, we got it, so, uh, further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, I have a motion by Ryan, second by Wanda, to approve the claims with the adjustment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve January 2024 payroll.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve 2024 payroll. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, may I get, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'd move to approve the 2023 fourth quarter mental illness report.
Motion by Wanda, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same, opposed, same sign? Motion carries, now is the time for the second public comment. Do we have any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Commission updates, Wanda, what do you got for us?
Nothing.
Ryan, what do you got for us?
Sorry.
You probably, you, you, you did a good job on your updates earlier, so, unless you have something else?
No, I don't have anything more at this time, so.
Okay. Don, you got anything?
No.
Dan?
Uh, yeah, there's a bunch of bills out there dealing with counties, I'm sure you're all tracking. Interesting one that's coming up is SB 199, which is a county consolidation bill, so keeping an eye on that. The HB 1181, there was a discretionary formula that would have moved it from five years to 10 years and would have allowed a name change of a property to start that over again, with the, the help of our Director of Equalization sent some good comments, and that bill was defeated in committee. SB 24 with the drug patch, looks like that's going up from 50 to $70.
Forty to 70.
Forty to 70, thank you, and that's the, so, those of you who don't know, and Wanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, it's a fentanyl drug patch, and it was costing more than we were reimbursed, so that's getting up, is it somewhat accurate?
Any, well, anybody, no. Anybody who a judge places out on bond for a myriad of reasons, whether it be DUI, possession of a controlled substance, et cetera, Judge Gearing, who's the presiding judge in the First Circuit, puts everybody on a drug patch. That drug patch is changed every two weeks, and the current drug patch tests for THC, cocaine, amphetamine, methamphetamine, and barbiturates, however, the new drug patch will also test for fentanyl. And apparently, the addition of fentanyl and the lab testing costs are what's causing the increase.
So, we'll at least break even now instead of it costing us, so.
But it's costing he or she who gets out on bond and not the county.
Yeah, and then last on the SB 31 with the Indigent Legal Fund is still going through, so that'd be a real important one for counties, so contact your legislators, thanks. Oh, one more thing, I got a printout from Department of Revenue for all you guys, and I know Ryan and Don is on the Wind Energy Task Force, it's important, we, we realize, this was eye-opening to me, is these structures are not taxed like normal property, there's a nameplate tax on them, but then all the production tax, the vast majority, I believe 80% of it goes to the state, so it's just important that we, we realize it's, it's not as straightforward as we think, and so we got to print out and feel free to share that, so.
Thanks, Dan, and I, I just want to bring up, I, I know that it was in the paper noted a few weeks back about looking at a possibility for, to form a task force for a feasibility study for some court, some sort of a juvenile detention center, or just to see whether we want to look at something in Yankton County. And I, I have reached out to Dr. Standage and Dr. Kendall about being on that task force, and just to reiterate that it's a feasibility study, it's not saying that we're gonna decide to, to build anything or do anything at this point in time, but I think it's very important that we, that we take a look at doing something like that, so. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that, that our constituents and the people in the county know that, that we're addressing or trying to address that issue, so. And that's all I've got, so. I guess at this time, I would need a motion to, to move into executive session.
I would move to go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, as well as 28-13 and 28-13 1.3 and litigation pursuant to 1-25-2 sub 3.
Second.
You got a second?
Yep.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to move into executive session. Thank you all for being here, and if you want to stick around till we resume, you're more than welcome. If not, have a good evening. Don, yes, sir? Okay, thanks, thanks, thanks for attending, Don.
What, what? Mexico. Sounded like he was calling from afar in Mexico.
I couldn't hear right over the far.
Yeah, until it becomes a fruition, because, because like we said, it's a feasibility study. It's not, it's not the written, so, the grant was turned down last year before to get it. So, it, it, what it, what it is, what it was, they found they decided they wanted to look at something to pay for our, our communities. And obviously, you can't do that along the riverside. But there may be a possibility if we could get a feasibility study done and a grant to pay for that, there may be a, a situation where you can ride a bike along Highway 50, and then, and then every three or four miles, take your Alamo road, or, or something like that, or a walking, you know, trail, or, there, there is a couple places where you can actually drive your vehicle down and get it down close to the rivers and take your kayak out. But it's, it's something where, we're not necessarily going to do that. So, if the grant comes through to study it, we'll study it, but I had calls to people that, I don't want people on my land, which I understand, but it's not necessarily, and, and we had meetings, we had meetings to explain that to them, they didn't show up. So.
There was multiple meetings, and nobody.
Yeah, and nobody showed up. To, you know, so that we can explain that to them, we're, we're not going to infringe on your property. If, if it ever becomes available, it's not here, we're not infringing on it. It's, it's something good that I think got tamed by misconceptions, and, and, like I said, if you want to go, you want to take your family and you go kayak, you go by the, the dog park here, and you're getting off on Myron Grove, that's 14 miles, there's no stopping, and then after that, Myron Grove, then it's all the way to Ramillion, so, you know, there's just not a lot of, you know, you're going to do a, a five-hour kayak trip, but you're not going to do one at all, and that's not what everybody wants, you know, and it's, it's a, a national park, you know, increasing access to it is not a bad thing.
And that's, and that's not if we were to do a surrounded, immoral online, just trying to explain to people what it is.
Like John.
And I, I, I wouldn't have a problem visiting with you a little bit, you know, with it, so. And then, on top of it, so you can visit me at some point, I mean, do you have my card as well, I don't know, I would be talking to Tom, I don't have any, but just in case, I have my number on it. I figure maybe sometime either the rest of this week or next week, if you guys want to have someone meet with me about the five-star shooting part, we can talk about that, maybe.
Well, that would be, that would be, give your card to Ryan, and, and have, you know.
Here, I'll give, I'll give, okay, yes, yes, perfect, yeah.
Are you the one who was in that airline, did you?
I was, yeah.
No, but it's, I'm glad you're working with those guys, Kurt's a good guy.
Yeah, no, he really is, so.
Well, you're by, uh, Doyle and Carroll's mom too.
Yeah, that's, that's actually where they're at, it's in.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I think I'm gonna go to, I grew up just right next to those guys.
So, and then, on top of working for them, I actually went from, from, from Doyle and Carroll, and so, yeah.
Good news now.
Yeah, go on.
Well, nobody wants, nobody wants to move to Cudocaw or Bison or frankly, Britain, South Dakota. Alright.
Make a motion to go back into regular session?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come back into, uh, regular session? Further discussion, hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just for the at-home viewers, there's no poor relief, um, that we're dealing with today, no new litigation, and-
No action was taken.
No action was taken. And I would move to adjourn.
Thank you, Wanda, a motion to adjourn, second by, by, motion by Wanda to adjourn, second by Dan.
Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.